This conference will now be recorded.
Yep.
Excuse me. Besire City Council Joint Regular Committee Meeting Thursday, May 21st, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Members present, Todd, would you do roll call, please?
Yes, McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Truka.
Here.
Welcome.
Here.
Oh.
Here.
All set.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, all members are present. Number one, Besire City Joint Regular Committee Meeting was called to order by myself at 6:00 PM. The meeting was conducted via video conference pursuant to Besire's codified ordinance 509.07 and Ohio Revised Code 121.221B4 pertaining to the coronavirus pandemic civil emergency. Is there any public participation? Okay, if there's none, we'll continue with the Order of Committee business and its finance and appropriations, and we'll ask for Mrs. Shipper to join us.
I'm here.
Okay.
We just, one appropriation, we need to appropriate from unappropriated sewage disposal funds the amount of $73,082.18 to debt retirement, and this is for semi-annual payments for our Group One and Group Two sewer separation projects, and that's all we have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the auditor? If not, can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Okay, Kevin, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by James Me. Okay, Todd, roll call.
Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, if there is no other finance committee business or information, I will adjourn at 6:03 PM.
Okay, this is the Service Committee. I'll call it to order at 6:03 PM. I guess, yes, sir.
I requested this item on, and I don't know, I just want to start a conversation. I know we've talked about it many different times before. I just want to start investigating what maybe some other communities are doing. When you have a landlord that has, owns the property and his tenant skips out on a water bill, the landlord gets held accountable for that, and I don't like that. And I know why we do it, because they're the only one that we can go back on. I guess I just want to investigate, you know, our other communities in collections. How are they going about that? Because I find that to be unfair to the property owner. They've done everything, done their due diligence, you know, they're trying to rent to somebody good and somebody, you know, just stiff someone on a bill. The problem we're seeing now that we're not doing any shut offs, where we normally would have done that after they didn't pay a bill for one or two months, now these people are going to be running up several months worth of bills if they skip out on them, these landlords are going to be very unfairly held accountable. I want to do some research and find out what other options we have.
Okay, sounds like a good idea. I remember one that was put in place. Linda Friend was a very, she was the head of the water department at the time. She was very vocal about this. I know even, even back then, it was very controversial. We had an engineering firm out of Columbus, Ohio at the time, and they even questioned, you know, about doing this. Mr. Ratliff maybe can speak to it. At one time sewer charges, it was left, it was going to be left up to the county, the prosecutor to enforce some of these charges, and I don't know, something about the sewer charges weren't enforced or couldn't be enforced, but the water, water could be followed. Is that?
There, there's a.
There's something in the state law that said. Go ahead.
Yeah, there's an ORC section about water rates, 74304, that allows a city to collect water against the property owner, because the, you know, there doesn't have to be, there's not always privative contract between the property owner and, or the tenant and the city with respect to water service. A couple of other ideas that had been floated and back and forth in the past were changing the deposit amounts. The deposit amounts have been the same since I've been here, probably years before that, and also changing or having a sliding scale with respect to the deposit amounts. You know, somebody that's owns their own home and has never had water turned off in their life pays the same deposit as somebody that may have had the water shut off 100 times. So those, those things are out there as well that you could talk about.
I have a question. Are we able to run credit checks on people and base their deposit on their credit? I mean, the water deposit's $180, that's a lot for a single mom to, I'm just saying, come up with. When you move into an apartment, you're looking at about $1,500 by the time you pay first month's rent, deposit. I see Candy shaking her head because we know.
It was December, it was very.
Yes.
Mine was 175 for some reason, I believe it was 175.
Okay, I was, I thought it was 180 unless she were a homeowner, and I understand being a homeowner, you know, then you have some kind of an avenue. I know that years ago, when my daughter moved into an apartment that had gas heat from a place that had electric, they ran a credit check on her, and she was quite young, and she needed cosigner because her credit score wasn't high enough. And I'm just thinking that maybe that's an avenue. I mean, people with good credit protect their credit, and they don't skip out on bills. So is that a possibility? Are we legally able to do that so that we're not punishing the good people who do pay their bills?
Yeah, that's within your, that's within the rights of the department.
Yeah, I mean, it might be something, you know, I know that, I'm assuming landlords check credit. I, I don't know.
Some do and some don't.
Okay, yeah, but they have the ability to, maybe, maybe base their deposits on their credit score. I just know $180 is.
It is, a question I had, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
When we were offering tap fees, we had a couple of different options for new people that want to do tap fees, where we could either take the tap fee upfront, or we could spread it out. Is there a way that we could do that with deposits too, where, you know, you charge a little more each month, and that's held in deposit returned to them? You know, I just want to look at all the options out there, because I think we're unfairly punishing a landlord when a tenant skips out on them. I know that we as a city want to collect as much as we can, but I think we need to do it fairly and, you know, right for all people.
Mr. Truka, I got a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Once the deposit is run out, why isn't the water shut off? Why does it, why do they run? I mean, I've paid four and $500 water bills, not lately, but that's a question. Then the other one is, once somebody moves into my house, I have their social security number, I have their driver's license number, I can track them down and take them to court if it's financially feasible. So why can't the city do this too, to the people that's using the water?
That's a question for Mr. Ratliff.
The city can do that if that's what council decides they want to legislate. Keep in mind, you're talking, and Jeff Wagner can speak to the process and how long it takes for shut off and notice and all those sorts of things. But if someone skips out on a water bill as stewards of the city's money, we can pursue that person for a $500 water bill, we can try to track them down, we can serve them through small claims court, we can go through the processes of trying to claim those and turning it over to collections, and, and maybe we get some of it, maybe we don't, we don't, if they go bankruptcy, we would lose that money. The ORC gives the city an option to attach that to the real estate, and in that way, the city is guaranteed to getting that money through that process. So those are, those are the two options that are provided under law. We can go after the, the tenants, and we would have a, just, you know, revolving line of litigation for, for those, and we could go through small claims court and continue to do those, the, or the city has the authority to attach to the, to the property. You can do it either way.
Rob, I've always, I've actually went back and garnished their taxes, their tax returns.
Yeah, you can definitely do that.
Can the, can the city do that as well, Mr. Ratliff?
Yeah, once, once you get a judgment in, in a civil claims court, then that judgment you can, you can attach to any, any manner of, of ways for any, any kind of revenue or income. We use the Attorney General's Office for some collections activities, and those, those accounts can be turned over to the AG's office. They can even do some of the collections, once we've got a judgment entry.
Yeah, I just, I view this as just, almost like if, if I'm leasing a car and I get a speeding ticket, you know, I should pay my speeding ticket, not, not the bank that I'm leasing it through. And I guess that's how I'm viewing this, that we're going after the landlord, and I get it, it's the, the low hanging fruit, you're, they're there and they're not going anywhere, and you're going to collect from them, but I just think that it's, it needs looked at.
How, how far are people allowed to go in a rearage? I thought if, it used to be if I'm billed on the 10th, it's not paid by the 15th, it's $5 more, and I'm, I don't know, a couple of days later, they'll just shut it off, isn't it? I mean, do they let them, are they letting people go? I know right now, it's, it's, it's a different situation because of pandemic, but don't we, we don't let them really go too far, do we?
No, but I've heard stories where somebody who's a tenant, you know, moves out and because they're angry, they just turn the water on when they leave, and you as the landlord may not catch that for a week. So, I mean, there's, there's maliciousness on the part of some of these tenants. I'm not saying. I'm not saying everybody rents is a bad person, I'm not saying that, you know, things like, you know, there's, there's times here where, where things, when they're out of that landlord's control, and I just, I want to look for a better option.
Maybe Jim Me can speak to that about the cutoff.
I think once the $180 deposit is eaten up in water and sewage or whatever, it needs to be shut off. I know that I've forgotten my bill, and on the 25th, they were out front shutting my water off, my wife's on the phone, hey, did you pay the water bill? I'm like, check, make sure. You know, I mean, I don't see how, I didn't, never have seen why that I've had to pay a four or $500 water bill where they were behind in the rears for three months, and theirs never got shut off, and mine shut off by the 25th. See what I'm saying?
I, I didn't get a bill one month and they shut mine off.
Mr. Chairman, I've got another question for the Law Director.
Yes.
I know that if you live outside of the city limits, you're subject to one and a half times the rate. Is there any way that we're allowed to bill one and a half times rate for a, a person who hasn't maybe paid as much deposit, like a renter? Or is that something that is set because they are in the city limits?
No, within, we have to, we have a uniform rate, and I, I get, I'll look, there's some, there's some ORC provisions, I believe, on that about uniform rate and charging different rates depending on circumstances.
Okay, I was just curious, I know, again, my, my goal is not to stick somebody with more than what they apparently should be paying, but it's just a thought to, to put all the options on the table to see if we're, because we're going to miss out on a little money probably this way. So I was thinking, is there a way to recoup some of that?
I like the idea that Jim suggested about, once the water deposit has been eaten up, if the bill's in a rearage, then that way the city doesn't lose and the landlord doesn't get hosed.
Right.
Is there a way that we could, and I don't know how we do this, but maybe look at several other communities around us and how they do it, and maybe just do some research, come up with some, some best practices and see if we can't find a better way to do it.
Well, maybe Todd could reach out to some of the communities, could you?
Yeah, I can look into, all, all cities in Ohio have all their ordinances online. It's pretty simple to do a random sampling of local, these are cities with similar populations or similar demographics and see what they do.
Okay, that'd be great.
Todd, you're awesome.
Anybody else got any questions or statements?
Yeah, Bruce, I got one.
What?
I kind of got a little experience with this, because I, I got to shut people off every month.
Yes.
And you almost, because you're going to have, you got two sets of shut offs. You got the habitual ones, and then the, somebody that, once in the last five years, they forgot their bill for some reason, and I don't know if our billing system has the capability of noting that this person has been late more than once in like the past 12 months, but maybe have it so that, because you're going to offend people if, if they get a hard shut off or something, if they've never been late on their bill in five years. But if it's set up some way that it can recognize this person has been late or shut off more than once in like the last 12 or 24 months, and then therefore you don't get, it, it would have to hit that to trigger a shut off, is what I'm saying.
Right.
I just, something I was just throwing out there.
In the insurance industry, I know I've got one company I write for, that if you're late with your payment, you get hit with a $15 late fee, have the ability to waive that late fee once every 18 months. So yeah, there might be ways that you could put a provision in there, like you said, Mr. Fankhouser, to, to, you know, let somebody who made just a simple mistake but wasn't trying to screw the system over. I like that.
That'd be a question maybe we can pose towards Mike Calb, who's supposed to be in charge down there.
I do have one more question.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead.
This is Jim.
Okay.
When we, when I pay my bill online, they go through a third party, and we're charged for that too. So if I pay, if I pay it online, I go through my bank for security reasons, but my bank goes to the, I go to my bank, my bank goes to my third party, and the third party sends a check, so I got to make sure that my bill is paid by the 10th, so it gets there by the 20th. If not, I'm going to be hit with a late fee or a shut off fee if it's not there by the 25th. What's the deal with the third party? Why, why can't we pay directly to our water department? Is there something going on there, or?
I, I'm not real sure. I know that it was, it was changed up, the Finance Committee a few years ago, Mr. O'Rourke and, and I don't know who else was on the Finance Committee, they're the ones that had set that program up, and I don't know, Mr. Ratliff maybe could remember something about that, I don't know, I mean, I wasn't a part of that part. But, I mean, the Finance Committee is the one that handled that credit card company and, and how the, the bill could be paid.
Yeah, I think Mike Calb would be the guy to talk to on that.
Okay.
Another suggestion might be, when they, they shut my water off, I, I wasn't, I wasn't very nice to the, I was angry. I had to take vacation time the next morning to go to the city water department, and she wasn't real sweet, so I didn't, but I asked her to check. I said, you check, I've never even paid my water bill, like after the due date in that five day grace, and I said, I didn't get a bill. And she said, oh, no, I've never heard that before. Well, Rick Smith happened to be in there, and that was right about the time that they had started this third party billing, and I said, I'm going to speak to the mayor. Roger Moore was the mayor at the time, and I, I did go speak to him, but I had to pay the reconnect fee, which was $45. At that point in time, because I was so mad, because I can't remember to pay a bill, you have to send it to me. And I do pay checks like old school. I had them automatically deducted, and maybe that's an option too. I know a lot of places, if you automatically deduct it from your checking account, they will give you like cheaper because they're not having to bill you. And then therefore, they're not leaving you with a big bill. I paid the first, I think I paid two months' worth of water, is how it worked. I had to pay the month I used in a month ahead, pretty close to, and then they just automatically take it out of my checking account. I, I, I don't have to think about it anymore. I get a bill, I get a statement instead of a bill. So that might be something that, you know, I know they can't require people to do that, but maybe that helps with the avenue of the landlords being kind of stuck with the bill too.
Okay. Bruce, this is Jimmy Me.
Yes, sir.
Hey, can we just do this to the next committee meeting, put this on the next committee meeting?
Sure.
That way we have time to do a little research.
Oh, yeah, no, that's great. I mean, that's what, that's what the intention is, is, you know, with you and Kevin and, and Lisa and.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not on the committee, but.
No, 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 but everybody's in, I mean, it, everybody's a part of it, so.
Okay.
That's great.
I'd like to make.
Maybe we can have, between now and, and the next meeting, has have Mike Calb come as, as well, and, and.
That'd be awesome.
Maybe, maybe Todd, some of his notes and stuff that he's taken, we can forward it down to Mike Calb, so he has an idea of what we, what we would like, to know more about. Anyone else got anything? No? All right, well, I think I'm gonna go ahead and not retire it, I guess retire, what we, what we call it, not end it. Whatever we call it, what time is it anyways?
6:23.
Recess, recess it. What, what time?
6:20.
6:23.
6:23, okay, recess 6:23.
Okay, I will call Plating to order at 6:23. And this is on the Besire's codified ordinance of Chapter 1321, the floodplain regulation. Mr. Ratliff?
Yeah, and Todd, I think you gave them a, a copy of, of the changes that we, we talked about making?
Yes, they have 1321.04E, and there's one change in there. I also have 1321.05, which is the floodplain, floodplains appeals board, which in my time here, and I believe in your time here, has been a moribund organization, so that would have to be addressed. And then late this afternoon, I got some stuff from Landon Hill and Zoning, a letter he sent to the ODNR, a community worksheet that came from the ODNR, and a bunch of instructions, I believe, for that worksheet. That is not in your hard copy packet, because I didn't get that till about four o'clock, it is on the digital packet as well, however, and that's.
Okay. Okay, so, a little bit of background, as you know, we had some issues with FEMA and the concession stand at the Little League Stadium. The issue was that FEMA, that the stadium was not built according to our floodplain regulations, and it did not have any certification. We were given three options, one of which was to tear it down, one was to make it elevated up out of the floodplain, and the third was to floodproof it according to our, our regulations. Lynn McKeever worked on that. We have flood, dry floodproofing planned to get the concession stand in accordance with National Flood Insurance Protection Program regulations. FEMA is okay with what we've proposed, as long as it complies with our flood plan that the city has. The catch is, the flood plan that the city has in this subsection E, the city has language that says, front, to the level of flood protection elevation for non-residential structures. That means essentially two feet above the base flood elevation. We can change that to what the National Flood Insurance Protection Program is, to just simply say base flood elevation, and it's in that section, and then there's another section in definitions where we would have to make that change. If, if we do that, then the plan that Lynn McKeever has put together will comply with our regulations, and our regulations will comply with the National Flood Insurance Program. Currently, our regulations are more strict than the National Flood Insurance Program. In talking with FEMA, though, they also indicated that we should speak with ODNR about modernizing all of our regulations, and the back and forth emails, there was a flurry of those today and late yesterday. The ODNR is recommending too, that we consider maybe looking at everything and updating it to some of their current models and some of their current regulations. However, ODNR says that it would take them at least 90 days to review our regulations and to get us a regulation in place, a sample regulation in place that we could present to council. But we only have 60 days to comply with the FEMA order, and so we can't change our ordinances in, in that timeframe. So what I'm asking council to do today is to request a draft legislation that would make one change only to our, to our floodplain ordinance, and that would be to change the flood protection elevation to base flood elevation, and then that's in that section E2A. It would also have to be changed in the definitions and one or two other places where that definition refers back to that, but that's a single change. We would like to take that draft legislation between now and the next council meeting and get that to ODNR and say, look, this is what we're doing, this is the corrections we're making to the Little League stand, concession stand. It complies with the NFIP standards, it's slightly less than what our more stringent standards are. We intend to do this, can we get your approval to go ahead and make this change? Or pending and knowing that we're going to, we want to make this change, and we want to look at the rest of our flood insurance regulations, will you grant us a variance to make our concession stand comply with NFIP standards now that FEMA seems to be okay with? So that's the two things that we're going to do after this meeting, but in the interim, I would like you to request legislation for this potential change in our floodplain regulations. It would need to be an emergency, and we'll shop that to ODNR and try to get some approval before the next council meeting on Tuesday. If not, we'll be trying to get ODRD, ODNR to either speed up their process, or FEMA to give us a little bit more than 60 days, or FEMA to grant us, or ODNR to grant us a variance, knowing that we're going to be looking at the entirety of the floodplain regulations. That's a lot, I know, but we've kind of been working on this for a few months, and it's all finally getting to a solution, solution stage.
Mr. Chairman?
I got a question.
Can you give me a, a definition of what base flood elevation, what base flood elevation actually is, though? I mean, it's non-residential, does residential then? I know that this is a section for non-residential, but.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I really need an explanation, what, what is the base? Well, I guess I really need an explanation. What, what is the base el- what does that actually entail? Because it seems like what's good for ones ought to be good for both. I mean.
Well, it, it is. And, and, and I think, I think it's, I think that's the correct thing to, to look at. The, the question is in doing it in residential and non-residential, ODNR wants time to take a look at that and they can't do it within the sixty days. Um, the other thing that, um, ODNR pointed out to us, uh, in their email was that we may want to have differences for residential and non-residential. Um, uh, she indicated that, you know, and Mr. Myers is on here. He may be able to give you some insight and Mr. Fote as well, that having the higher standard in, in residential can lead to community-wide higher or lower insurance premiums because of the increased standard that we have. It doesn't impact the commercial quite as much, I guess, as it does the residential outside of my wheelhouse. The, um, definition of the flood protection elevation, as Lynn and Lynn explained it to me, was that the flood protection elevation required it to be two feet higher than the NFIP standards. And the base flood elevation only required it to be one foot higher than the standards. The difference that makes for the concession stand is whether everything in there can still be used because it counters and everything would be at a height that would, would qualify under the base flood elevation. Without doing that, then all that, that whole downstairs is essentially unusable, I guess. Lynn, uh, McKeever is going to come on Tuesday, uh, the next council meeting to give more detail on this before anything gets passed. I simply want, uh, the, the draft of the legislation so that that can be presented to ODNR in the meantime. And during this two weeks, we can hopefully get them to give us some input and some guidance if it's going to be okay.
So is, so the one foot, when is, when you mean one foot higher? Do you mean, what do you mean inside? I mean, is it like raising the floor up one foot? Is that what that means?
No, no.
Leave it in the structure there.
Yeah, the, 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 a- as I understand it, the base flood elevation is one foot higher than what the, the floodplain is there. So if we.
Like a deck inside?
No, no, it, it just says, it would just mean that we would have to dry floodproof it up to that level.
Oh.
So we would have to.
Drive, make it waterproof one foot higher than what the, the base elevation.
Yes, yeah, exactly. And, and our ordinance requires it to be two feet higher than, than the floodplain level. And that difference with respect to the concession stand and the concession stand only, that one foot difference is that zone inside the building where apparently all the built-ins are, are at. So that makes a huge difference there. The, the estimate to, to get things even to this dry floodproof level is somewhere in the twenty-five, thirty thousand dollar range already. So if we have to go another foot higher, uh, it, it probably likely even worse. But, um, Lynn McKeever said he would be available on Tuesday if, um, if we got any kind of clearance from ODNR that we could do anything as far as moving forward. Um, and I hope to get some input from them before now and Tuesday. And that's having the draft legislation would only be for purposes of communicating with ODNR that this is what our intent is. Um, they've already seen the plans for the improvements, the floodproofing at the concession stand. They're okay with that. They're only, the only part where they're not okay with it is those improvements still would not comply with our ordinance because of the additional foot height requirement that we have.
I have a question. When was this ordinance? How long ago was this ordinance put in place and why did we go above and beyond what the federal standards were?
You know, I don't, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, just that excerpt. I'd have to go back and look. Um, they've been there for a while. They likely have been there for twenty years at least, I would think. The, um, and those regulations are updated fairly regularly at ODNR and at FEMA and both have indicated that they have, um, more recent, uh, uh, changes. Um, and in fact, uh, the email from ODNR indicated that they have, that they have a PDF that shows all their changes from their previous two thousand and six state model to their now current two thousand and nineteen state model. So at a minimum, we'd be talking about updating our package, our entire package of flood, uh, plain regulations to be compliant with the, the state's two thousand and nineteen model. This is something we need to do anyways.
Since we have a couple of insurance agents here, um, what, what type of increase would the residents be looking at in their insurance? If we went to.
Do you want to take the question or do you want me to?
Do I?
Essentially, we're, we're talking about raises in the cost for flood insurance, which isn't widely sold. Um, so I can't, unless you've got a better idea. I don't know that we could give an answer to what you see as a premium increase.
I honestly would say the same thing in a sense with flood insurance. It's all administered by the federal government. And in a sense, it's, it's left up to them to determine rate and all that for coverage and by floodplain and zone. And there's so much that goes into it and we don't even really know how they get to the rate that they get to or anything.
Yeah. And that's in our, our preliminary conversations with ODNR were very basic. You know, I, you know, there's, there's a big difference between living in Bussires and living on the shores of the Ohio River or something. Um, so, um, it regardless, we kind of got to look at modernizing or updating our code to comply. And I don't know, I don't even know if we updated it to comply with the two thousand and six. We may be a time or two past that one. But we were.
Actually, Lisa's question. We, uh, last time I looked it up on the CODEN codified ordinance, it looks like, uh, twelve sixteen and oh three was the last time we passed any legislation to do with flood.
Okay. So we're two, we're two, uh, at least two updates behind. And, and we're not talking about reducing ours below any kind of national standards. We're actually talking about making ours, uh, the same as the national standards. Um, and, and again, these are all things that we're not gonna spin out on our own. These are things that we're gonna work in conjunction with ODNR. And what ODNR had sent us actually was a worksheet that they asked us to go through, complete, fill in, and then from that, they would generate a sample ordinance that we could then adopt. So we'd, we'd be doing some, we'd be right on point with what ODNR wanted. So, um, we're, we're not doing anything outside the scope of what ODNR and FEMA both want. And FEMA, in discussions with the FEMA representative today, he kind of, uh, gave us a little bit of a clue. He said ODNR is grant funded by FEMA to actually do this for small cities and towns like us. So, you know, he said, make sure that you get them to do it for you because we're paying them to do it. So we can take advantage of that. Um, and, and with respect to the non-residential stuff, that is purely for two things at this stage. It's, it, one, to get some preliminary approval from ODNR. And two, to kind of negotiate with ODNR on getting the baseball concession stand, uh, dry floodproof to the, to the estimate and maybe either a variance or a, an extension, since we're not going to play baseball this year, it looks like. Or, uh, allow us to go forward, knowing that we're going to be bringing things into compliance with their current standards. Kind of three different things there that, that we could look at. And just having that draft is the first step of it.
Okay. Mr. Hill, did you, uh, look up that ordinance? I saw you pull out one of the ordinances and can you give us time on that?
Yeah, I looked through one three two one oh four. Um, it's confusing. There are many different, um, changes in there. It looks like two thousand eight. Um, a lot of that was updated. Whether the one three two one point oh four E, B, um, or A, I should say. I think it was, uh, two thousand eight. Looks like two thousand eight.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
So you're just asking for base fel- uh, that's the only, that's the only one you're asking for then, right?
Yeah, I'm just asking that you request a draft legislation to make the modification in the non-residential structures requested as an emergency. I'll go ahead and prepare that much earlier than I normally would because I want to try to get that in front of ODNR. So we can continue the conversation with ODNR and, um, FEMA. Right now, we have a mid-July deadline to get the baseball, the concession stand fixed. I'd like to get a little bit more time on that, especially since we're not going to be playing ball, uh, between now and then. But at least show that we're moving.
All right. Well, if that's what you're asking, I so moved then.
I second. Okay. Okay. I have a first and second. And Mr. Hill, if there's no other questions or discussion, Mr. Hill, take roll call.
Uh, Truca.
Yes.
Myers.
Um, I was both.
Oh, I was both?
Yep.
Uh, we're talking, oh, we're in party. I'm sorry. Um, okay, I was both. Okay, gotcha.
Jim who seconded?
Truca, Fote and, um, me.
Yeah, Jim seconded.
Okay, very good. Um, thank you.
Okay, now, part two of that is we do have this flood, uh, review panel. Uh, it hasn't met since I've been here. But in going through these adoptions, we're probably going to have to get that flood review panel up and running. Uh, our ordinance requires that one of the members be a member of city council. So don't, don't everybody rush to the forefront here, but.
Well, usually it's the chairman. Mr. McKeever.
Mark, I think that's a great idea.
I'm saying usually it's the chairman that's always on that.
That, if nobody objects, I, I'm not in disagreement.
Oh, okay.
How do we, uh, Mr. Ratliff, uh, are we gonna get applications for this?
App- applications.
For the? Yeah.
In all likelihood, I don't think so. What, well, what the committee is more likely going to be involved in is some of the, um, the questionnaire filling out that ODNR is going to require for us before we update our ordinance and to show that we've got everything in place. We'll probably have one organizational meeting and then a second meeting to, uh, prep, uh, the worksheet that would be brought back to the, to council. So I don't, I don't see a whole lot of work in it, uh, until after those first couple of things. It hasn't had much work in the last seven years, so.
No. Okay. I was just looking at the board and it's, we consist of member of council, mayor, service safety director, engineer. I was just, uh, just checking if there was anybody else that we needed in there.
Lynn McKeever would be the engineer. That'd be great.
Yep. Okay, um, yes, I'll be glad, I'll, I'll be glad to be the, on there as a representative. Okay, if there's nothing else for plating, I will adjourn plating, recess plating at six forty-three PM. And, uh, Mr. Myers, you want to take the floor?
Yeah.
Not health and safety. I've got, um, the ad hoc committee.
Okay.
But do you need to close out the regular committee meeting, then have the ad hoc called order?
Well, I was wondering if we would call health and safety due to the question about, um, a, uh, to start to reopen the, uh, rediscover the vacant, built vacant building ordinance.
We can do that. I'll call health and safety to order at six forty-four PM. Go ahead, Mr. McKeever.
Do I have a hard copy?
It, it's in the email, uh, um. Mr. Ratliff.
I can't be a part of it.
Um.
Why?
Why? Cause I don't have it in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me either, but.
Okay, well.
It was not on the agenda. It is an open project. It can be brought up, but it was not put on the agenda for tonight. So it's not in the packet. Uh, there was an email that was sent today, uh, from the law director, a forty-three page document on, uh, uh, updates on local vacant building ordinances around Ohio. Um, that's, I sent out today, but it's not in the packet because it was not on the agenda officially.
Well, one of the reasons I brought this up after I read this and I discussed with, uh, Rob a little bit, uh, with this, uh, COVID nineteen epidemic, as they say, and these buildings, we may get an influx of vacant buildings, especially commercial ones that, and the existing commercial buildings that are sitting vacant and, you know, um, could become a safety hazard, especially like the old Juan Rubber Building on, uh, East Mansfield there. If you look at that, uh, southeast corner of the building as you're heading towards the square, you can see that it's coming apart. Now, I don't think it's at that point where it's going to fall right now, but who knows? I'm not an engineer. But, you know, that's one of the buildings and we have others that the old Ponderosa and, you know, and some of these vacant homes that have been sitting empty for several years. And they're, you know, we need to find something to, I'm talking vacant buildings, not, not, uh, rental property that's being renovated. I'm talking vacant buildings that have been abandoned and they're in foreclosure or, or whatever. Um, I, I think we really need to do something to, um, like when a bank calls about a foreclosure that they ask if there is any registration fees and we don't have anything and, uh, you know, I'm not trying to profit off of this, but it would be able to help us, uh, put the responsibility onto the building owner that's leaving it vacant. Um, and not doing anything with it. And eventually like what we had to do, we had to get money for the, uh, uh, Shine Theater that we had to, luckily we got grant money for. Otherwise, we would have had to come up with a quarter of a million dollars that we don't have. Just to tear a building down because somebody neglects to take care of it. And I, I really think we got to do, start looking into this really hard to find a way to manage these buildings so that, uh, the owners take ownership and either resolve the problems of the building or remove the problem. That, that's my concern.
Mark, this is Jim. What if the building's being used for storage?
Well, the other thing is if they're being used for storage and, uh, the fire department has no idea what's in there or the police department. Uh, they have no idea if there could be flammable material, uh, toxic material, explosive material, uh, you know, there, there, I'm not saying they can't use it. But if, if it's sitting there empty and we have no information on it, you know, the firemen or the policeman or both, i- if they have to go in there due to an emergency, just like the, um, the old Echelberry fire that we had, oh, two and a half years ago over here on Spring Street, uh, which I got to look out my second story window and watch it burn. Uh, you know, they didn't know that somebody was living there. Luckily, somebody did say something and they got. Luckily, somebody did say something and they got the animals out and nobody was in there, but, you know, they had no idea. Uh, building sitting there without any information and i- it's a safety hazard, let alone for, uh, people walking the streets or driving by, let alone the, uh, uh, for the police or fire department.
You know, that there, that apartment Echolberry was rented because there was a water bill there, so you would have this information, but where would this information be? Because the city knew that somebody was living there because we had utilities there, we had water there. Um, so the city knew it, but the fire department didn't know it. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's part of the problem. There's not, there's nothing set up to get the communication. Now, I don't even know if that water, if that water bill was to the owner of the building or to the renters. I, I, I don't have a clue about that because, you know, some places the bill goes to the, you know, for a, uh, uh, sometimes multi homes, they have one bill and it's included in everybody's rent. Uh, so I don't know. I can't answer that. I, I don't have any facts on that and I, I don't want to speculate. I don't know. Don't know, so.
Thing is, where, where would this information be? Okay, I have a building that I use for storage. I invite the fire department to come look at my building, say, look, I got storage here. I'm storing wood, I'm storing panels, storing this and that in here. Um, now, the fire, that firefighter is off that came and looked at my building, then is he going to write this down? Is he going to keep it somewhere where the rest of the firefighters knows what's in that building, what's flammable, what's not flammable? I mean, what's the?
I believe they can. I believe there, there is a way to get a database to have it so they can punch in the, the property and know what's there.
So this is.
Gentlemen, I, I see that Barry Ursula is on the call. Barry, is there anything you could add to that with how your procedures are right now? If you have an inspection, uh, how information might be passed on? He may not be. I can tell you, Mark and, and Jim, from my experience when I worked for the fire department in Willard, um, we did inspections two times a year on every commercial structure and there was a file generated and, um, that was just up to, to everybody in the department to review and if there was a call, that file was actually pulled and taken at the time at the fire. It was accessible through the computer in the engine. Uh, so information was necessary to be passed on, uh, if that answers that part of your, your question.
Would it be possible to get the fire chief in here on the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Discuss this a little bit further. If you're comparing the Swan Buildings to the Paul Ponderosa Building, the old Paul Ponderosa Building is pretty dilapidated compared to the Swan Building. I mean, the, the structure needs a little, the yard work needs done around it, but they look like pretty solid buildings.
Yeah, and I think in this instance, what Mr. Ratliff's looking at is the actual vacant building being, you know, registered. Like we said, there's a lot of times that we get telephone calls, uh, where out-of-state property managers and out-of-state attorneys want to know where to send the check to, uh, because there's so many places that are doing this. I think we're, we're, number one, you know, getting our, our share of that revenue and number two, having information. Whereas I think it's a, two, two different things that kind of go together with this. Mr. Ratliff, I don't, do you have anything else that you want to add?
Uh, ju- just one thing. La- last year, we, we spent twenty, I forget, twenty-five thousand dollars to tear down four houses that were abandoned and vacant. Uh, and when I say we, we took twenty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer money. People, people working and paying taxes, we took twenty-five thousand dollars and tore down four buildings that people who owned those buildings had walked away from and had abandoned and had deteriorated, impacted the entire neighborhood. A vacant building ordinance is one of those things that is designed to shift the burden of dealing with the problems of vacant buildings from the taxpayers to the owners of vacant buildings. Not all owners of vacant buildings have a dilapidated building. I, I, I get that. Some of them are in excellent condition. Some of them are not. But what we, what we're talking about with the vacant building ordinance is, is taking that burden from the taxpayers who are people that are invested in the community, working and trans- transferring that burden to people that have, have vacant and dilapidated buildings. Sometimes that's out-of-state banks. Sometimes those are the zombie houses that we have very little other recourse against. Sometimes those are just houses that families and people and businesses have walked away from. But I think, you know, I, I can look around town and I can see a number of buildings that were vacant when I was, when I was a, a child in school here. And, and they're still vacant today. And, and what is the burden on us as a city? What is the burden on our taxpayers for those buildings? That, that, that's, that's part of the purpose of a vacant building ordinance. Part of it is safety. Um, I know the, the city, whether anybody knew what was, there were people living in that chicken plant. Nobody knew what that black smoke was coming from, that, that people were sick and complained about for, you know, days and weeks afterwards. Because nobody knew what was in there. And again, that's another thing that goes to vacant building ordinance. One of the things that you look at the sample ordinances and one of the things that all those ordinances require is for, uh, owner of a vacant building, if they're not local, to have a de- local designated agent. So that when the property needs mowed, when it becomes a dumping ground and it's full of mattresses and old furniture and tires, the city has someone that they can call and say, hey, the yard needs mowed. Get those tires off there. Get that couch out of the front yard. Um, the, that's one part of the, of a vacant building ordinance. And again, it's to allow for, uh, the people that have to live around those vacant buildings to, to have some manner and method of ensuring that they meet some certain definite standards, that they're not open, that they're not places where, uh, bodies are being found from drug overdoses and needles are being found. When I first came here seven years ago, I can't tell you how many times I was out looking at a vacant building and I'm finding needles on the front yard, just laying on the sidewalk. We've done away with a lot of those houses. We've torn down a lot, uh, thanks to land bank. We were able to tear down a lot. Thanks to city council and their investment in property maintenance, we've torn down a lot. And thanks to the tools that you provided us, we've been able to, uh, do a lot with respect to eliminating some of those hazards. Uh, but there's a lot more work to do and as we look at the recession that's hitting us, as we look at the issues that, that people are experiencing, and, and many times I get it, it's no fault of their own. We need to be prepared for the wave of bankruptcies that, that are going to follow. It's simply going to happen. And it's, we're still recovering from the last housing bubble and those bankruptcies and those houses that are still sitting out there that are bank-owned, I could, I could rattle off, you know, several right off the top of my head. Um, so we've got a lot of those down, but all of those that have came down, all that, those that were torn down uh, in the last, in the seven years that I've been here, every single one of those was paid for with taxpayer dollars. It was either taxpayer dollars that went to the land bank or it was taxpayer dollars that came into city council and city council, uh, had the, had the, uh, the nerve really to say it's worth the investment in, in our community. So tho- those are the key considerations and, and when you look at a vacant building ordinance and, you know, nowadays, it's, it's hard to find a city that doesn't have one. Um, that's the goal of it. Safety, control, so that we can make sure that it, that it's not deteriorating the, the rest of the neighborhood around it and impacting people's property values and transferring the burden of those properties away from our taxpayers and onto the, the businesses and the, and the individuals that are plaguing our community with those buildings. Soapbox.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Candy.
Sorry, I've been trying to, what are the legalities on it? So if somebody buys a building, they have a building, it's not a danger to others, it's not falling apart. Um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to see where I'm, it's not falling apart. Taxes are paid up on it. I don't see what right, and I understand it's a se- safety issue, what right a city would have to know what's inside that building? You know, I think if somebody bought the building, they paid for it. I, I don't understand it. It seems like a violation of rights. Why go into your house?
Knowing what's, what's in your house, you know? Knowing what's inside of it is, is kind of a, a secondary or even a tertiary issue. Um, having it registered so that we know that it's vacant, that we know that it's, that there's security, that it's secured in such a way that, that we know, um, that, that it is secured, locks, boarded up if need be. Um, and that there's a contact person. There's a, there, there's any number of times, the, the house, three oh three Galen is, is a perfect example. Every time I went by there, somebody kicked the door in and then they'd go in and squat. And, uh, and so there was nobody to contact. Luckily, then we get in touch with the owner and that owner, after a while, became reasonably responsive and we ever get things done. So the, the more important issues are not so much what, what the content of it is. The more important issues are that, that we have a, a registered agent or owner that we have contact information when there are problems and things need to be dealt with. Um, that we have, um, in place the tools to ensure that it, there's a plan for it, that it's, if it's, if the plan is for it to sit there vacant for the next twenty-five years, that there's a plan in place for the community around that. And thirdly, to make sure that we are, um, generating non-taxpayer revenue so that we can use those funds to remediate those, those properties. One of the things that other communities have done with, with their vacant building ordinances and one of the things you can take a look at, some communities have, have it and it's basically self-funding and, and it, it generates enough revenue to pay for the people that monitor it and pay for some of the remediations. Other communities have used those funds, and you look at some of the bigger communities especially, have used those funds to do things like provide grants to people that can't afford to fix up their house so that they can stay in their house. Uh, provide grants for downtown business facade improvements to keep downtown businesses going. Provide grants for sidewalk construction. That's something near and dear to, I think, everybody's heart in, in town, getting our sidewalks up to date. And those are all funds that, again, not taxpayer money, but generated from businesses or in many cases, out of, out of town and out-of-state businesses that, um, have an impact in our, our community. So the, there's a variety of levels and I think you, we can focus on, on things like what's in the building. A lot of times we don't care and that's not really necessarily a part of it. Is the building safe and secure? Is it properly locked and, and boarded up if need be? Um, those are much more important than, than what's inside. Now, for commercial structures, if, if somebody's, as the example that Mr. Me brought up, it's not vacant, I use it as storage. Well, in, in not, I personally, Mr. Me, but I, in a general third-person kind of context, if an individual says it's not vacant, it's, it's my storage building, does that comply with the, the zoning ordinance in that area? Um, is, is a, is a storage building permissible use in that area? If not, do we have the appropriate variances or whatever in place for that? If it is being used as a storage, well, what, what are you storing it? You know, are you storing gunpowder and, and gasoline? Um, that becomes a, a very pertinent question at that point in time, if it, if it is being used for some sort of commercial use. Because again, we have zoning issues and, and things that may be impacted there. Um, and, you know, and so those are, those are kind of much further down the, the, the chain in, in those. And the more important things are just the registration, the knowing who, who to get in touch with, knowing how to keep, making sure that we're keeping up with the property. Um, but one example is the, the building that was, the house for a couple of years ago, that was right across the street from the elementary school. Abandoned for ten years. Eventually it started collapsing. Um, and this is right on the sidewalk, right next to the elementary school. I mean, that, you know, that could have been a very tragic situation. Um, there, there are other buildings that are very close to the road. Um, and, and if they collapse, that, that could be a problem. That, one building that we tore down on West Mansfield Street that, uh, there were literally bricks falling into the neighbor's yard. Um, that was Shine's Theater. That was the same thing that happened there. We were very fortunate with the grant, but there were bricks falling onto Doug Godwin's, uh, furniture store there. Um, the, again, those could have been very dangerous situations and, and that's what we want to have.
Art, I have a question. Are you talking about every homeowner in this town paying a registration fee for personal living or is this just businesses and?
No, not at all. It's, not at all. It's not even for businesses or for rental. It's for buildings that are abandoned.
Oh, okay. So you're going to see about the vacant buildings?
It's only buildings that are vacant or abandoned.
Okay.
So this doesn't have anything to do with garages or anything like that, that, you know, there might be a garage that sits on a, without a house or whatever. So you're saying that, is there a registration fee then for that person?
Only if it's vacant or abandoned.
I don't understand vacant or abandoned.
Right.
And if it's vacant or abandoned, you don't, nobody owns it.
I would refer to the Al Smith Building.
Oh, yeah.
There's people that own Al Smith's building. There's people that own the old Swan Building. There's people that own the Ponderosa. The, there, there's a bank that owns the, the building next to the post office. There's, you know, any, there's a a dozen abandoned properties that are owned by people. Um, but they are abandoned or they're vacant and have been for years.
So the city is Al Smith's in the city limits?
It is not. I think it's an example.
Yeah.
It's in Whetstone Township, but it, for the example purposes, um, I know that, like, we got the email today. I think let's, until we meet again in, in a few weeks, you know, we've got, uh, in that email, ordinances from Ash Dubula, Marysville, Gallipolis, Urbana and Fremont. We could start by reading through those, find things that we, we have questions about and then we could come back and, and discuss this, you know, in a little more detail of why would we do this? Why wouldn't we do this? And then include the fire department on that talk as well.
And I haven't got an email either, by the way. I've been looking. I got no email from Rob today.
I, I don't have that email yet either.
Um, it came in at eleven twenty-two AM. It came from the council clerk. It was forwarded from Mr. Ratliff and we are listed on it as getting it at eleven twenty-two this morning.
I'm sorry, I see it now. There's, I had a bunch of emails on there.
Got it, got it, got it.
So, so let's, let's go ahead and take the next two weeks for, we can read through those, uh, five cities ordinances. Make note, and, and then we've got something a little more concrete to have a discussion on. We can start to say, we do like this, we don't like this. I'll let Mr. Ratliff answer a lot of questions and, and see how it might be more specific to us here in Besires. You know, we, not without reinventing the wheel, we can look at these five ordinances and, and see what, what works and what doesn't work. And then we can have a, have another discussion in a few weeks.
And, Mr., I, I think you're getting ready to go into your ad hoc committee?
Yes, sir.
If you don't need me, I think I, uh, am being requested to help with some homework, so.
Okay, I do have one question for you that I could lead off with once we start ad hoc here in a minute, if you could give me a.
No, yeah, sure.
Okay. Uh, is there anything else on the, this vacant building ordinance for right now, uh, or anything else for health and safety? If not, I'm going to adjourn health and safety at seven oh nine PM. And is there any public participation on anything we've discussed in these four committee meetings this evening? Hearing now, I'm going to ask for a motion to recess the joint regular committee meeting.
So move both.
Second, all set.
So moved by Fote, seconded by Allset. Todd, if you do a roll call.
Okay, uh, Fote.
Yes.
All set.
Yes.
Um, Keever. Myers.
Yes.
Me.
Yes.
Truka.
Yes.
And Yocum.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're adjourned at seven oh nine and I will call the ad hoc, special ad hoc committee meeting to order at seven oh nine. Again, I'll lead with my question for Mr. Ratliff and then I'll get it to public comments. Um, the one question that came up, Rob, was, and I, I've been looking, I can't find where it is, but we had an issue, it came up a few weeks. The one question that came up, Rob, was, and I, I've been looking, I can't find where it is, but we had an issue. It came up a few weeks ago. Where we had had a special committee meeting that was set. And the way that the news press release was issued said that it was called by the committee chairs. I can't find where that it's at. Is that something that's in the Ohio Vice Code? Or is that something that's in ours that we could change that wording?
It's a, it's in your code. It's in uh, the city code.
I couldn't find it. I apologize.
Yeah, um, the, it says, I'm trying to do it from, trying, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's trying to do it from memory. I, it says, being could be called by mayor or any three council members and but it's in our code.
Okay. And I'm all right with that for the, for a council meeting. But I would like to, to have it more specified that a committee chair could call a meeting if, if they so need to.
You, you can do that. That's, that's part of your code and, and you can set that up. You know, if you, you know, especially for just a committee meeting, you know, three, three members is your entire committee pretty much. So.
Right. So um, that's something that came up, but um, obviously the other committee members can chime in and, and share what their opinion is on that.
I think it'd be great to uh, have it so that if the chair wants to call a meeting for the, whatever the committee is, that, that could be helped instead of having three of us.
If, if you're asking to chime in, I, I just think it's, it's kind of nice though having all three people know what's going on before the meeting is actually called.
I agree wholeheartedly with you. I think the issue here was in that particular instance, all four of us in the committee had agreed to meet and knew what we were meeting about, but we didn't uh, the way that the, the release got typed up, it was considered invalid.
I agree. They all, all of us need to know. Cause I think we all need to know from the chair needs to make sure everybody can meet. So, you know, I think it'd be all right if the chair calls it, because not going to call, he or she's not going to call it unless there's enough members that can be present.
Well, you still have to have the quorum. So yeah.
Yeah. Well, if it's not written down though. I don't know. And anything anymore. If it's not in writing, it's uh, you know, don't do anybody any good.
I just wanted to throw it out and see how everybody felt about it. We can discuss it more now. We can discuss it more later. We can come back and, and, and change it later. I just wanted to bring it up. All right. So now I ask if there's any public comment and what we're meeting on tonight is uh, Besires Codified Ordinance 111 and 113. And what you have in front of you in your packets was email that we'd requested with color coded with changes about in our previous meeting, most of which were suggested by Mr. DeShawn. Is there any public comment or participation?
Yes. Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Besires, Ohio.
Good evening, Vicki.
Can you hear me okay?
I can. Good evening. Go ahead.
Um, before I comment on the draft that you have in front of you, um, I'd like to just outline a little background history of the events that have led up to tonight's meeting. And I think that'll clarify the questions that I have about the draft. First off, um, the law director's draft of the ordinance, which amended the chapters 111 and 113 was presented to the ad hoc committee at its April 9th meeting. The changes that were made by the committee to those chapters were bolded in the draft. On April the 9th, I emailed to counsel and the law director. My suggestion suggested revisions to the law director's draft. My email cover letter stated the following. The purple italics with strike throughs were to be removed from the draft. And the red italics were to be included in the draft. The law director then presented his second draft at the May 7th ad hoc committee meeting. This draft included the committee's changes in bold. The draft also included my suggested inclusions, but they were not bolded. Since the purpose of bolding is to bring attention to what changes are being made to the current chapters. I requested at the May 7th meeting that my suggested inclusions also be bolded. At that same meeting, I also brought to the committee's attention that the law director's second draft did not include the previously requested breakdown of the committee's order of business. The previously requested slash her in the first paragraph in section five. And the previously requested sergeant-at-arms clarification. In reviewing the law director's third draft that has been presented at tonight's meeting, I note that the draft includes my suggested revisions to the law director's draft. But now it also includes the revisions that I requested be removed from the initial draft. I guess I do not understand why tonight's draft does not mirror the law director's second draft, save and accept for the bolding of my included revisions. And then those items that we discussed at the um, May 7th meeting, which again, had been previously requested of the law director, but were not included in his drafts. So I guess with that being said, I have the following comments concerning the draft. Number one, this third draft should not, in my opinion, include the items with the strike throughs. Those are items that are being removed from the chapters. So we don't want them in this draft. They weren't in the law director's second draft, which in my opinion was a correct draft. But for some reason now we're turning around and putting everything that I asked for in this third draft, even though my cover letter said, hey, those that are in purple italics, they're to be removed from the draft. Those that are in red italics are to be included in the draft. So I guess that's my first question. I, I don't understand the formatting of this third draft.
I think, and he's not here to answer, but I think I recall that when we spoke about it at our last meeting, we'd asked Mr. Hill to put this together and, and prior, it wasn't color coded. And I, I, when I read through it, I had the, the presumption that they did leave your purple strike throughs there. So we would be able to know what, what you were suggesting. So I didn't view that as as anything wrong. I, I was actually glad to be able to have it all broke down color coded to be able to know what you meant. But I, I do see your point.
Well, I guess in response to that comment, Kevin, you didn't have an issue with Rob's second draft, which didn't include the purple.
No, no, I'm saying it's easier to read when it's color coded. I had it when it wasn't and I read through it, but.
Well, and I guess the color coding was my way of showing you people, hey, this is what I'm suggesting to be included in the draft. This is what I'm suggesting being taken out of the draft. That was just barely uh, for easy reference on the part of the committee, but when it comes down to the actual legislation itself.
I see your point. Yes.
Because in the law director's draft, he doesn't have in there what was previously in the chapters with strike throughs of those in your inclusions. He just puts what you guys wanted to include.
Right.
So that's my first comment um, on that. Um, we'll look at page two of five of this third draft. I'm calling it a third draft because I'm keeping track of how many times this has had to been changed. Um, page two of five under B committees.
Two of five? Yeah. I'm looking for the right one too. I'm looking at the one with the colors is, is seven.
All I got is two of seven.
Okay, um, well, if you want to look at that one.
I don't have two of five.
Well, then let me, whoa.
We, we do have the ones of five before that on our packet. That would be page number 20. Which would be the law director's second revision, I believe. Is that right, Vicki? No, because that's still a strike throughs. They're just not.
Well, I was going to say, I print it off what uh, was in the packet.
We've got, we've got one that's two of five on page or page 19. And then we've got a.
Did you get the updated packet, Vicki? There was an updated packet that's sent out later today.
Yeah, an hour before the meeting.
I've got a two of seven, which is our page 24.
All right. Just give me a second here and let me go into my computer.
Okay.
And pull up.
So in other words, being that I did a hard copy, I don't have that information again. Correct?
No, you should.
I can speak to that if you want.
I don't, I'm not on a computer right now. That's why I get a hard copy.
No, I got you the latest hard copy, Bruce. You got the latest hard copy that.
It, it says two of seven.
Now you've got, um, you should have, um, one that you've got the uh, third draft as Mitch DeShawn calls it, which is five pages. Uh, that's in black and white and that's just followed by the seven page uh, draft, which are our heard changes color coded. Um, and that was in the uh, paper packet as of about 11 o'clock this morning. And then that was distributed to uh, everyone who has a paper packet. It is also in the digital copy as well.
So Kevin, are you saying you do not have the one that's, that's page one of five, two of five, three of five and four of five?
Yes, I do. That's just not what I was looking at when you first started talking.
Okay.
So that page two of five is page 19 in our packet.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. So.
Page two of five, B committees, correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Under the breakdown of the agenda, it says order of committee minutes. I think you want that to say order of committee business. If you look at your agenda, the uh, joint committee's agenda, that's what it says.
Yeah, I believe that was supposed to say order of committee business. Like you say, including approval of minutes.
Correct, correct. So that first minutes needs to be changed to say business.
A, I agree. Uh, anybody on the committee, speak up whether you agree or disagree, but I think she's absolutely right on this one.
She's right on everything.
All right, go on, Vicki.
Then, um, well, I'm calling it page three of five. So it'll be the next page.
Page 20 in our packet.
Okay, page 20. Under section five. Oh, this was the issue to do with the confusion on sergeant-at-arms and police officer.
Right.
Now I noted that um, the change has been made under 111.21 B1. Which says if following the warning set forth in subsection A herein, the subjects fail to leave, the sergeant-at-arms may remove the subjects from the meeting. We've, uh, you've struck out, will then direct the police officer.
Correct.
I have sat down and read and read over this section. And I have to wonder since we're deleting police officer in section B1, if everywhere in section 111.21 references made to attending police officer, police officer, or assigned police officer, if those should not be replaced with sergeant-at-arms.
I'm going to throw a what if out there. What if there's a time where a police officer is not present at the meeting? Should a group still be served by somebody else acting as a sergeant-at-arms was, would be my only question to that.
Well, uh, because your B1 says the sergeant-at-arms may remove the subject from the meeting.
Right.
So does that not answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it does. I guess when you, you said that you wanted to remove sergeant-at-arms altogether and change it.
No, 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 no. Not remove sergeant-at-arms. Remove. Oh, I'm sorry if that is what I said. What I meant to say was where it says attending police officer or police officer or assigned police officer, or the words officer, take those out and replace them with the words sergeant-at-arms.
I got you. That makes more sense. But we would still have the chief of police or his or her designee tied as a sergeant-at-arms.
Exactly.
Would we probably want to add a sentence into that, another sentence into that paragraph? That somehow says that if the police department does not have a representative, then who becomes the sergeant-at-arms?
Well, if you look at um, BD, it says if the assigned police officer, and I'm going to put in sergeant-at-arms. That says if the sergeant-at-arms needs to leave council chambers to process and arrest, the sergeant-at-arms will request a placement from an on-duty supervisor and not leave until a replacement arrives. Unless in the discretion of the sergeant-at-arms, the delay caused by waiting for the replacement officer causes a more severe problem than having the meeting unstaffed for a short time.
Okay.
So I think that.
So the police officer feels he has to leave. We're just without sergeant-at-arms during that time. But I think it would be at that point.
And I mean, you know, I guess we're back to if we leave the word police officer in, we're back to that question again. Is the police officer actually the sergeant-at-arms? Because the sergeant-at-arms is either the chief of police or his slash her designee. Which if the chief's not there, I have to believe his designee is considered the police officer that's standing there as we come in and.
I agree. They're, they're being paid and they're scheduled to be there. So I, I think you're absolutely.
So that means they then are the sergeant-at-arms.
Yeah.
So if they are the sergeant-at-arms, you can't make reference then to police officer. Because the police officer and sergeant-at-arms are one and the same person.
Right. So we're in B1, we said, we struck out.
Right.
The police officer. So that, that's okay. Are you somewhere else that's a discrepancy right now?
Um, if you take a look at 1121 A1, it says unless the attending police officer. That would be one area that I'm thinking you want to remove and replace with sergeant-at-arms.
You said in 1121?
Yes. Well, okay, under section five. And then in. And then in section five, you have 111.21, Council Rules for Security.
Yep.
Take a look at A1, unless the attending police officer. And I, I'm just throwing this out. I know everyone is to the point where they are so sick and tired of working on this, but... And I guess I'm just going to say it. I'm somewhat getting the feeling that people are thinking I'm just being buggy, buggy, buggy. But in my defense, I've only had one draft revision. The problem's been people aren't looking at these revisions and doing them properly. They're forgetting to do this and putting this in and not putting this in. It's... But anyhow, um...
When I look at A1, you know, to me, when it says unless the attending police officer perceives a threat of violence, I'm okay with that being there because it does, it is ambiguous a little bit. I mean...
And that's fine. I'm just throwing it out. You, the committee does what they...
I'm not a lawyer, but I'm okay with it the way it's worded.
Um, number three.
I like the way that's worded also.
I agree with that also. I would like to have it right. And let's just, if it's not, if it's not in clear black and white, there's too many misconceptions.
Correct. Yeah, I don't want to vote on it till I have a correct one in front of me.
Yeah, I agree.
I kind of want to go through and see what changes she makes. And Todd, if you're keeping track, then we can maybe get them updated.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I just have, uh, two comments. Um, I, I agree with Mr. Truka. Um, I mean, I did put everything in the packet. Uh, he can't find it in front of him. Um, maybe others can't find it in front of them either. This is not the best way to do a meeting as we have all, uh, come to the realization over the past 70 days. I, I think until we, uh, are meeting in public, in person, face-to-face, I don't think we should take any formal action on requesting a draft or requesting legislation. Um, just because as we're, just, we're finding again here this evening, uh, this is a, this can be a deeply confusing subject. It doesn't have to be. Um, I think if we're talking about this in person and someone doesn't have it in front of them, I have an extra copy and I can give it to them. And, uh, we know that we're all looking at the same thing because we're all in the same room. I think, uh...
And we know we're all going to be in the same room together in two weeks.
That's one. And two, on the strike-throughs, um, what I did here, and I, I consulted with the law director's office on this as well, um, I added everything that Ms. DeShawn wanted in here, including the strike-throughs, only because, um, as I think Mr. Myers said, uh, it does help to see what we're taking out. And in other ordinances and resolutions have, uh, passed in, in the past, strike-throughs have been in the legislation. I'm thinking primarily of the manpowers. Uh, when we take things out, the strike-throughs are in there, at least for that, that ordinance, until we come back to it again. And frankly, I think some of the manpowers still have strike-throughs that go back a few years. Um, so we have had strike-throughs in legislation that we have considered in the past. But I think the main point I want to make is that is need to wait until we're in place of, we dive into this, uh, to the extent that we are getting ready to do two tonight. Not, not that I want to pass it on to another meeting because we've already done that for two and a half months. But, um, um, I, I think we want to get this right.
I agree with you.
Kevin?
Yes, Vicki.
Um, I understand totally what Todd is saying about the strike-throughs. But my question to that then is why does the draft not include the strike-throughs of what the committee took out and changed? It, it needs to be consistent if you're going to show...
I, I agree. Um, based on what, you know, Bruce brought up and what Todd said, I would entertain a motion to table this and we could, uh, revisit it in two weeks when we meet in person. And in the meantime, Vicki, if you want to either send to all of us, to Todd, to me, however you want to do it, everything you kind of wanted to go through summation of this evening. And then maybe by the time we meet in person, we can have a final draft of everything the way we want it to look when we're in person in two weeks.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Lisa.
And I'm not trying to be funny. Vicki, do the draft and then we know it, it'll be right. And then I, you know, nothing against anybody, but then everybody'd be happy and it'd be done.
We have to read it first, Vicki, I think.
Yeah, um, Vicki, would it be possible for you to just email what's, one of us, all of us, however you see fit, so that we can have the summation of what you wanted to go through tonight there and what you did kind of go through?
Yes, I have no problem with that. And Lisa, thank you for the kind words.
Yeah, please don't be... I'm not trying to... Something, but wow.
My only concern with that is I don't want to... I'm not... Oh, I'm fine and I know what strike-throughs and I did. I don't know what the committee themselves were originally looking at and what they were striking out and adding to, especially since we were looking not even at updated chapters to begin with, when this whole thing started back in January. But so yes, in response, Kevin, I will be happy to, um, I'll be happy to do that.
I think that's great. I'm with Bruce on that. I want to read through now a final with no strike-throughs, um, the way that it's supposed to be for us to vote on it and pass it.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you. Now, I will say, and, and I'm going to send to you just as you've asked. But, um, there is a typo in A3. It's sergeant-of-arms and that should be sergeant-at-arms. But I'll have all that when I send you my email.
Very well. Uh, can I ask for a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table.
Yocum, second.
All right, rule call, Mr. Hill, please.
Okay, I will do a rule call vote. Um, McKeever?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes, yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Vote. I think vote is gone. He's not on the committee. That's fine. Um, don't see him here. Um, Allsept?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, before, um, before, um, we, uh, disband for the evening, I hope someone was going to bring this up, but just in case they weren't, we need to, uh, schedule a time to meet, uh, for a special council meeting on Tuesday, the 26th of May. Um, per, I think it's 3:17. I, I don't know the, the BCA ordinance. But, uh, on the motion to reconsider, Resolution 219, which is a safer grant, um, we can, as council can, can take that motion after 10 days following the veto. Uh, on May 15. 10 days, uh, would take us to the 25th of May. We can't do this within 10 days. We have to do it after 10 days. That takes us to May 26. That's as soon as we can do that. So, um, we, uh, at the last meeting, we, on Tuesday, we talked about having that special meeting on Monday, the 25th. As I just, I mentioned, we can't do that. We can do it on the 26th. So we need to, uh, decide what time to do that. And also this being a special meeting, we need to decide what will be on that agenda and won't be. Uh, the only reason I mention that is because in addition to the motion to reconsider, uh, within 24 hours of the, um, emergency proclamation, uh, regarding the pandemic being changed by the mayor, council needs to, uh, to consider that change. Um, we, uh, on May, on March 17, uh, the proclamation was issued, closing the building. Uh, it will be changed on the 26th of May to open the building. So council needs to meet within 24 hours, which we will probably be doing, to, uh, to go along with that opening and to make any changes to the hours or whatever council sees fit to do. Uh, that was 70 days that we've been closed. Uh, so, um, I just need to know, um, one, what time we're going to do this on Tuesday? And, uh, two, if there are going to be any other things on that agenda besides the two things I mentioned, because ideally I'd like to get this, be a notice out by, before I leave this evening.
The floodplain, don't you got to put that on there, too?
Uh, well, the flood, no, the floodplain, um, uh...
I thought they said they needed that as an emergency to meet a deadline or something.
I got from Rob, I got the impression from Rob that he was okay on, on June 2nd on that. Um, I will get in touch with him directly right now. I'll send him a text, but...
It is.
Go ahead.
Todd, Todd, I'm back on, uh, Tuesday. The, the next regular council meeting on Tuesday is fine. Uh, Lynn indicated he'd be able to come there if we had any movement forward to explain any of the, you know, specific scientific details.
Okay.
And so Tuesday, the 26th, we're meeting at City Hall rather than virtually. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, once the building is open and we are, uh, able to meet in council chambers, uh, we can no longer meet this way, according to the state ordinance that was, uh, or the state law that was passed a few months ago. So, uh, this will be over and out once we're able to meet in public. Um, so yeah, as of Tuesday, there's a BCA Board of Zoning Appeals meeting that afternoon at 4 o'clock, next door in council chambers. And then we can do the same thing, um, later that evening or whenever we want to do it on Tuesday.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it out to everybody. I have a doctor's appointment at 4:40 PM in Marion.
I have it at 9:30 in the morning.
I work all day.
Have to wear pants now that we're at City Hall.
Bruce, you think 7 o'clock would give you enough time?
Yeah, yes, it would.
I'm all right with seven.
I'm good with it. I do have a question. Are we going to be doing social distancing? I know some people aren't worried about that summer, but I'm, I've got elderly family members and coworkers and...
We, we could space the chairs out and, and maybe use the, uh, the table that back there at the media and move the media over into where the general, uh, population sits.
I would appreciate that.
I have another question. Are we allowed to have more than 10 people? Because people want to come to that meeting.
I would refer to the law director on that. Uh, he kind of mentioned, uh, that was kind of up in the air, uh, a couple of days ago. Um, that's a good question.
Because that's the thing. There's already 10 of us when you put just the council members in there. And the mayor mentioned it the other day, too.
Right, uh, but when the building is open, we are required to meet in, in public, in person, and the building will be open. So, um,
So we have to allow the public to come.
Right, it has to, I mean, it's a public meeting. The public has to be allowed to come. And, uh, we can separate the chairs and we can have masks available and, and recommend that everyone wear a mask who, uh, thinks they should. Um, but it's a gray area. I agree. That's, that's a question for the law director.
Uh, everybody, one of the things that we're looking at, uh, and still, because it seems like it changes every day, the, the governor's order that rescinded most of his prior orders and said they're all suggestions, because I guess there's lawsuits underway, um, and how that impacts that 10-person rule, I, I honestly, I don't have a good answer. Like I said, it changes frequently. The other aspect of it is a, a hybrid situation, whether if council's in one place and broadcasting it live and allowing public participation virtually, whether or not that's going to be acceptable. And I don't know the answer to that either. That's something we're going to continue to look at and monitor and try to get figured out. It's, it's just one of those things where it's, nobody's ever done it before kind of thing. We're going to take a look at what other cities are going to do and try to figure something out.
Are you running around the block, Rob? You sound like you're out of breath.
Homework is very taxing.
Yeah.
I have to... I'm done. Can we have that figured out by Tuesday?
Yeah, I think that...
We'll, we'll have some sort of plan in place. We'll, we'll have to.
Okay.
You could maybe, um, have people out in the hallway or spread out, out there, and then only let one in at a time or something if it's going to put us right on the 10. But I don't think that 10, you know, that's going to come down to who, who would prosecute that? And I think the prosecutor could have prosecu- prosecutorial discretion.
Yeah, uh, the, two things on that. And, and I, I thought about that. We talked originally about bringing people in in shifts to view, view meetings. But there becomes a question, if you're in the first shift and you want to see what people in the second shift are saying, do, do you have a right to do that? And I think you probably do. So the, it, 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 it looks to me at this stage that we may be in some sort of a hybrid virtual situation where we are, we're there live, but we're broadcasting it, um, for public attendance. But I don't know. I'm going to try to find out what some other cities are doing. Um, some of the smaller towns have just went with live and whoever shows up, shows up and try to spread them out. But we're kind of at that...
We could still do, we could still, even though we're live, we could still keep the go-to meeting going, just... I mean, we could be doing the go-to meeting years down the road still, just to have a way for people to watch a meeting live that we're doing.
Yeah, and I think that's, and I think that may be where we're at in this in-between stage. And as long as somebody is there monitoring the go-to meeting to make sure that public participation is conveyed to council or, you know, something, I, I think that's doable. Uh, like, like I said, I'm just going to try to get some sort of input, some sort of insight as to what other communities are doing. It's going to be one of those situations where there is no clear definitive answer. We're going to have to do, make the best judgment we can make and, and, and fly with it.
I, I will say where I work, there is quite a few employees. And I know everybody else works in places where there's a lot of people. And as long as we are socially distanced, obviously we're covered because they would shut us down if, if they weren't. I mean...
Well, and it's like the restaurants and things now. It's no longer, the whole building isn't, isn't split to 10. It's, your, your group sitting close together is less than 10 and it's up to 50% of the original, uh, fire department capacity.
So I think maybe if we just spaced the chairs out for people to be in, six feet apart or something, we might get away with it.
That's what the, uh, the presidential news briefings did. They placed their chairs further apart. And I think there was more than 10 people in those.
Yeah.
But it's, it's no different than if we had, you know, if, I don't know what our number, occupancy number is in, in council chambers, but let's just say it's 100. You know, if 105 people showed up for a meeting, you know, we'd, we'd have to address that without all this COVID stuff even. Now that number gets taken from 100 down to 50. So if more than 50 people showed, we got to deal with it just the same as we would have, you know, prior to this. Just a different number.
Is the time 7 o'clock on Tuesday?
What was your question, Jim?
Is the time 7 o'clock on Tuesday?
I think that's what we said, yeah. All right, well, is it all right that I recess the ad hoc committee at this point? Take a motion for that.
So move...
I make a motion.
All right, Candy and Mark, um, Todd, yeah, I guess you might as well do one more rule call.
Okay, Yocum?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're adjourned at, uh, 7:48. See you guys Tuesday.
7:00 AM, right?
Yeah, don't forget your pants, Lisa.
Right.